Justin, you said that.
What is it?
Zach is. Yeah, David, for David's way that we worked out, right?
He could be.
Zach is ill, might join us, might not. Adam is definitely ill and will not be joining us. And Stanam is still with her son, who is recovering.
Yes, he's doing much better.
Better and better. So could just be the five of us tonight. Although I anticipate Bonnie will be here. Josh is going to set up this room so we can arrange to start the workshop. Or let you see that occur.
Are you in Zoom right now?
Yeah, Zoom is running. It was just a broadcast.
And David isn't trying to log in right now.
I have Adam and Lucas online right now.
Is there any public comment or an arranging participation from our online folks prior to the start of the workshop? If you do intend to speak, please raise your hand and Josh will help identify that you want to talk. So. There's no public comment at the start of the meeting. So we decided to have a workshop on fire station stuff. We, you know, I'm most interested, I think, in trying to. I guess determine, I don't know if that's the right word. You know, what we think our timeline is to try and accomplish. I'd like to not go too far past the first year. You know, where we can. I feel really lucky with voters voting for the ballot. I'm respectful that and I want to get into. Thinking about what that, what that decision was going to be when we had the October 13th public meeting. You know, we talked about that we make it additional public input. I don't know if we still want to do that. You know, regarding the choice of locations at the time, we focused on the dollars and the request for what was virtually a similar amount of money depending on. It's the early estimates for the lines of both, both locations. We've got some sentiment that maybe we want to spend less or try to spend less than that. Regardless of which location it's at. I guess I'm hoping that the discussion, if there's anybody that has a question or a thought that wants to steer us in one direction or another, we go off and we go anywhere.
Yes, I mean, I agree that we should, maybe if we start with the time, can we start with the timeline? I mean, I think to me, and maybe I'm the only one that thinks this way, but I kind of want to work backwards from when we want to start construction. Right? Because are we sort of like, that's got to be, does that have to be in springtime? So are we going to, we are not going to hit next year, right? Probably three.
So. We're working back from like the construction start date. There's going to be a period prior to construction that is probably going to be like construction design to some degree, which is probably going to be at least a couple of months. We obviously will, we will need money to do, to do the construction piece. We can front the money and pay ourselves back through bond proceeds.
For the design order.
For the design work in the trucking. But. We only have, I mean, we only have so much reserve, so we can't get too far into construction without having the bond process. That being said, you know, we would, you know, issue the mill for the levy on, for July 1st, the July 1st levy. And in order to hit that deadline, council would have to issue. The resolution probably three plus months prior to that. In order for us to be able to go through the bond issuance and receiving the bids back on the bond, finalizing the bank that we're going with. And then actually get the money.
Question.
Yeah.
So. We do have to go through. You have to go through setting up the bond before we do the millage. You can't do the millage based on the bond because the millage payment is going to be based on the bond.
The, 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 the millage is to pay back the bond.
So we have to set up the bond ahead of time so we know what we're obsessed with.
I, that, that, that's my understanding.
Okay.
And so you said about three months, so we have to start that beginning of the. So what potentially is as early as February, but probably February, April. Or February, probably by February, March.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's if we wanted to levy something on the July 1. Otherwise, we end up waiting a whole year.
Correct.
Now, is there. Do we have the ability to levy on the December bill?
That would be a re-question.
I just want to see if you've been.
I, I do, I do not believe so. Well, I mean, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
All right, we should be a little, very cute talking now.
Hello?
Oh, there, there we go.
There.
Hello?
We can hear you, Bernie. Hey, Bernie. Can you hear us?
Hey, you can hear me now? Yes, okay. Um, I believe, yes, we could do it in the winter, but I'm not completely sure.
Okay, well, that can be verified, then we should.
Yeah, I'll find that out for you.
Thank you. Pushing out August, September. I'm not trying to push it out. I'm just saying that if something doesn't time and hit, I'd be able to keep doing it relatively the same current year.
I kind of walked back four miles.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I appreciate that because I, I agree. I don't want to push out either, because we don't, if we don't get something.
Welcome, David.
Thank you. Welcome. Glad to be here. Good to see you all.
So we were, we were talking about timeline. And how long things take, so to speak. And we started with, what does it take in terms of issuing the bond? How far in advance of, for example, the July 1 date where we would issue a millage? If we have to initiate that process and just inform us sometime in February or March at the latest. To be on the July 1 millage and then we just ask our treasurer to see if, if it was possible for us to put that millage on the December. Bill instead of July 1. Most of the city's stuff is done on the July 1 bill instead of the summer one, but there aren't two issues, so she's going to look into that. While you keep going on the timeline.
Okay, so if we have to have this resolution by, let's call it mid-February, just for the sake of. How many meetings do we have between excluding the next meeting? Because that one, we're not going to do any heavy lifting, right?
So you'll have two in January and two in February.
Okay, so we'd have four meetings to. Decide a location and an amount.
Potential.
Okay. That's regular meetings.
Regular.
We could follow up work section.
You could.
To work through some of these things, like, let's say, we decided on a location or we decided on an amount first or something. I don't know. I, now I'm just, okay, got it.
No, I'd like to know what everybody's thinking too. Yeah, so we've got to get time to the millage and all that. Like the locations.
I'm just trying to pull up that pro-con chart. I'm just trying to find it for myself. I know that we have it here, but that I think was somewhat helpful to me. And if that's still up to date, given the last iteration of the thing.
While you're pulling that up, can I ask some more timeline questions?
Yes.
David, for, for the two scenarios that you came up with in September, the latest two that were designed into that eight to nine million range. What on a traditional design bid build. Process, how long do you envision that? Design process? Can you talk us through that in terms of what you think it would take your firm, for example, to do that for us if we were to say, you know. First meeting in February. Location A or B.
With the answer of which location, which approach would generally be around 20 weeks. With the variable being, it's the worst case scenario, meaning most time consuming, probably 28. So between 20 and 28 weeks, that would be a process. And there's a couple of little points within that timeframe that could throw that a little sideways. And that's jurisdictional approvals, whether it be county or planning commission. We tend to try to make those concurrent or overlapping with other things we're doing. But there are some times where meetings, schedules, and approvals do add some time to that.
I'm sorry, I'm going to write something down. That's the time for the design to build?
Design to the bid.
Regardless, oh, to the bid.
To the design to the bid.
Regardless of which.
I estimate 20 to 20. Meaning it could be pretty quick if it's the simplest approach, or it could be more time consuming if it is a complicated process or.
And what, what permits do you see us getting during that period?
It would be basically submitted. You wouldn't get permits, but there's long lead time for some of the site work. So that would probably get started before we, or as soon as we possibly get that done in terms of phasing or having early release on some underground package. We are doing that more often than not right now because it does take more time, not just from approval process, but from procurement. It's better to get something started sooner than later, and that's one thing to do. Other. Part in there that you have to do is some of the, again, we're trying to overlap them, but site surveying, geotechnical, those aren't really part of the process. They happen during the process, but we try to make sure that once we get a footprint of a building where it's going to be, that we get geotechnical lineup as soon as possible. So we're not waiting on that information. Site survey, obviously, a little bit time sensitive. If it's snow covered, it shouldn't be that much of an issue, but we tend to kind of put a little bit of a timeframe there for surveying and a lot of.
Michelle?
Yeah, I presume you plan to take this to the foundation for the.
No.
You might hopefully find it down?
I was thinking that was going to be the first thing that David said.
I think that we would, at least I thought we would, but if you don't, then that's fine too.
No, no, I was joking. We have to go through site analysis, sure. When, when do the, when do the plans go to the building department to review?
We, we do, we do a preliminary review at the beginning of construction documents, which also had the early life safety code plan. So we just like to get through a couple of the things that might be questioned when they're looking at the final hard copy. So we anticipate anything they might need. So that's one thing. It happens during the design process and documentation process. Then we submit when we go to the bid. So we're getting them going into the city once we get them out in the streets for bid.
Reason I was asking that question is, it's my recollection that for the renovations to this building. That took a long time.
It did.
Including the soil erosion permit, which seemed to be the sticky.
Yeah, it did take a long time. There was a little bit of a, a couple of slip-ups or pull-paws where it's out on somebody's desk for a while. No one kind of knew where it was, but there was some period of time when that happened. I don't remember where it was when that occurred, but. There was something related to that in respect.
Doug, when SIO did their renovations. Was the county responsive from the building side of things?
They responded. I don't know how you define responsive. I guess, I mean, there were, there were some things that happened pretty timely and there were certainly some pauses at different steps. As their workflow had been flow within the, the building department.
I'm just wondering if we could somehow create a. Partnership process with our government entities that are on this that need to help us to get involved there, at least that we're not waiting. We want to be doing there.
I prepared a couple outlines of things, like what we're talking about right now, that it's going to hand out and it happened to be one of those like this.
Please, yes, thank you.
I'll, I'll hit them all, all at one time. So I don't have to go three times.
Fair enough.
Well, what, what, what's up with the cords?
Yeah. Yeah, but you start over there.
Why, David's saying that, I think, I think one of the things that will help.
So you mean really going through that?
Yeah.
We've got two more packets or these also online.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome to work.
Thank you, Bernie.
In the meantime, I did find that table. I found it recently in the June 27 work session. You stood and holding that up on page five.
Did you say one of the.
June 27. Work session.
Flow there, but in that memo one, you kind of outlined generally the, it's really headlines. What happened in some timeline. You can see there in number two where it talks about the process. I indicate outlined jurisdictional reviews and the steps. That way, we're heading into a full process with pride there with some knowledge of where our people are in their timeline. They also printed out the two schemes. There's two each. Jackson, it was two each. So I think a little liberty, if you don't mind me just giving overview of what you can just.
Yeah, this is good, yes.
So. On random one, it's just a real general outline of the process and the task that would take place with some bullet points and some timeline. Two, we're going to get into the, the conversation about delivery methods. And it's been commented a couple of times in recent meetings over the last year. What would that be? Construction management, there's an agency or at risk and a little bit of information there about design, build, and traditional. And then third. In this process, like we did at the very end, where we're looking at the summary, there was a committee appointed or assigned. And I think in projects of this magnitude, the length of the project, it makes a lot of sense to have representation, certainly the user group and the fire department. But the city council administration in the process during the actual design process. So this outlines, you know, real briefly in memo three, what would be expected or could be expected from committee members, you know, should they want to be formed? And should they be interested in this? So that's kind of three pieces of information. In addition to plans, which already have, or had those.
I have a quick question on that, just to clarify mine. So on the first memorandum, memorandum one, you kind of estimate a number of work sessions on that? I'm guessing that's for some internal group, not specifically like a full council work session, and that meant to be like the.
That would be the committee group.
The committee group.
And, and note that the user group, the department, would have much more interaction than the work session. We'd want to bring to.
Than our work session.
Yeah, well, the, the committee work session.
So there's a, there's a user group, a committee.
And then your, your council.
And then council. Okay, and how do the, so I know we have a council.
Yeah, so user group would be daily interaction, questions flying back and forth and throughout the whole process.
Okay.
And that information gathered or refined would be then reviewed with the committee to bring them up to speed on issues and also at decision points. To go A or B, left or right, that kind of thing. And then that committee would then report back to you, work sessions, or as a design team would come back and do something similar to that, report back to you of where we stand in certain junctures of the process. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Multi-layered.
Right, and I think we had, Stanam was on, she was meeting with you at some capacity, right? I don't know like what you would call that group.
That would have been the committee group.
Like the committee group, okay, so some version of that moving forward.
Yeah, so that's a recommendation. You don't, you don't have to do that. We can, we can do everything within the user group and design team and then come back to you. I would suggest on a multi basis, a very minimum, if there isn't a committee, but it could be structured anyway, you feel comfortable that you're being informed and you're getting next happens to. The thing I tried to do is not make it so repetitive or redundant that we're not making progress in between times and calls.
Right, right.
And that's the user group and us that's really doing all that get it done sort of thing. So when you're looking at it, you're seeing meaningful advancements.
Yes, thank you.
The big question mark in this process and from on timing standpoint is item one, site screen options, evaluation, files. Design, whatever that is, whether it's a new station at Main Street, renovation station on Main Street, a new station at the MAF site. Those are the things that I'm trying to hit within item one. Let's get the thing defined. And once it's defined, then the process of designing it and documenting really begins. And I don't want, I, my personally wouldn't want to shoehorn that, and even though I'm saying a goal, three working sessions, just so we're working towards the target. But if three's, that you're at three and we haven't all said high five, then there's more. But I think you need to have a goal on trying to achieve what the project's going to be in your mind, you know, within some timeframe, even if it moves.
When do we have to make the, okay, so that's on random one. I want to review earlier. It's here before we. Do you have any questions, gentlemen, on random one? Okay, why don't you go to two and talk about that?
And so two, you know, this is a very early introduction to this, but since you talked about it, I'm suggesting a construction delivery conversation. So for this building, you went general contractor, which is a design, we designed it, we documented, we bid it, and then it's being built for the, so that was very, you know, task completion, move on, task completion, move on. And then the results are dependent upon the bid environment at the time you bid it. This variation of that is changes. So there, there is some pro to con. Sometimes it deals with the best price on bid day, but you don't know the price until bid day. It's a very much variable approach. CMA or construction manager agency is. A approach that a lot of institutions will use where they hire a professional builder, a construction manager to, to join in the team at the early stages to. Really, their main focus would be budget, schedule, constructability, monitoring the environment of buildings. So they're bringing a very narrow expertise to the process, but it's very important because it keeps the design team focused on designing solutions coupled with their input on the focus of cost and schedule. You do that two different ways. The agency or at risk, so the agency, they're your kind of professionals sitting on the sideline. And then when it comes time to bid, they bid it out to all the trades and for masonry, electric, all the, all the different trades. It'll probably be 25 to 30 for this project, 25 different trade work. And in an agency, they would work, the trade would work directly for the city and the manager would just manage their efforts. So you'd be holding a lot of contracts and you would have a lot of different trades accountable to you through the construction manager. Kind of a better refined step to that is the construction manager is at risk, where he holds all those 25 to 30 contracts as a single source of responsibility for building. And the nice thing about that, all the upfront pre-construction or design process effort they make of budgeting and scheduling. You do that with the idea that they're going to commit guaranteed a price. So if it varies above or varies below, it's their risk. The, the upside is that they cover the cost if it goes over. The, the, the good thing is they work all through the process trying to use the best price. So if they save some, they share it, some of the savings, so they give more than they're going to do job. And that's more common now than it has been in recent years where it's going that way. But the time when they make the commitment is moved back a little bit. It used to be kind of about halfway through the project, everybody felt comfortable, they understood the marketplace. Supplying and demand and supply chain were all pretty predictable. About halfway through, when you're making really critical choices about what your building is going to be, they commit to best price. And they rein things in when they go left or right out of bounds. By that point, it moved back in the process to documents complete. So it's go through a bidding process and then they guarantee the price. So if things change during construction. That's the limit in terms of cost overruns. Again, if it comes in under, they look to share the savings that they're able to produce. But it's two very different, the key to either one is bring along as early as possible so you benefit or the value they bring to the process you get in the very beginning. And that's why I kind of brought that up, is that one of those scenarios is probably going to be early in the, either step one, in the concept refinement conclusion. Or in the step right following, maximized design. Get the best bank of the buck and have them in early. So that's essentially outlining pros and cons of what they do in those two pages of memo two. Then I can explain that clearly. In my head, I got it perfect, but sometimes I skip a lot or what's lost in my head didn't come out of my mouth. Did it make sense? And just as an example, we're doing. One of each right now. So we're doing two agency fire stations, CM, manager of agency projects right now. A main station for. Green Oak Township and a new. Green Oak Township and a new station for Northville Township. And we're doing this CM at Ri- or CM at Risk for Port Huron for a new red floor station. So it kind of varies and it's kind of lopsided to the agency versus the at-risk at the moment. But in our projects, but then then we also have a general construction one or down the pipe on, we're doing work for the city more and they're doing a bunch of stations that are, and then you can do yourself. It's a variety, matter of what you're most comfortable with. Well, those are the stats. And then like I said earlier, the memo three, I talked a little bit about what I would expect or what the roles or responsibilities for someone that wants to sign into a committee position would be, and I break it down to what happened, design phase and what happened to that. Construction phase. It's an interesting switch. You don't have to be in for a A to Z. You could have a person that's only interested in the design process and not constructing process vice versa. Very valuable to be a continuation of, if you're on the front end and planning in the back too. Three or two?
I don't have one, so if I didn't know.
I did three. I don't know any more twos.
So it's the from schematic design through the bid, through the beginning of the period, through the preparation of construction documents is twenty to twenty-eight weeks. We aren't likely to know our by July one. No matter how, no matter how fast we accelerate that, we're certainly not going to know it by February or March at all.
Because you need to complete the twenty to twenty-eight weeks to get them up, do you know?
Well, I mean, you either need to bid it and have a hard number, or we need to have a construction, if we go with the construction manager at risk, we'll see on C, what do we call it?
Yeah, maybe.
CMC. No, CMC. If you go with the construction manager at risk, they'll give you a guaranteed maximum project at the end of the prior to the bid period. But he's got to get to the end, he's got to get to the end of the construction document period. So I, you know, I'm just putting A and B together. To me, it doesn't sound like we're going to be doing the mileage in July. Fairly as we can do it is December, Marie said we could do it.
Uh, so, so then, uh, Marie sent me a text and per the charter, city taxes shall be collected in July.
Okay, I wondered if that's a condition. The, um, do we have to have the run before and bid before we decide what the plan's going to be? I mean, I thought what we did before was we got a general estimate and said this is about what we thought it would be for X amount for nine point two, nine point four million. So why couldn't we do those two things? Why couldn't we just say that's a nine point two million dollar, or eight point two million dollars, or whatever it is? And just do bonds based on that and then you're just, you know, that's what it is. You either come up with more money somewhere else or or that's what you're, you have to work, go for the budget. So I, um, I suppose you could, I guess, if you're depending on risk allowance. If, I mean, if if the market carries the amount higher than the amount that we issue bonds for, plus whatever on cash, then we're facing that decision of why do you close the gap, depending on how big that gap is. If it comes in under, then you, which, you know, maybe that's, people sound crazy for that, but then you'd be the over bond it or you're just not spending your cash. And that would be the ones that's essentially under the eight point four.
Right.
But that, that's the one that we can bond is the eight point four.
That would be a good problem to have.
Yeah, and the worst case is you put the balance in escrow and yeah, I mean, these two documents that they had presented for us, it doesn't, it says something about consideration seven percent acceleration of cost, but is that figured into these two documents? It shows it, but it doesn't really have, doesn't have a number. That would be on page eight and page thirteen. By the way, if it goes out from multiple years beyond, what that estimate is, is huge apply.
It goes out beyond twenty twenty-three.
I think that was the intention. For a year, year September twenty-sixth, I think that was the date. Estimates where you had escalation at the bottom of those across those two regions.
Yeah, so I did factor in the escalation as though they wouldn't be right around there. And the dates, I'm looking for that, it didn't include the date.
I guess my point is, every, did we calculate that or were you starting as a deficit, not knowing what the market's really going to be like? I guess we know what it's like right now.
I know we established on data, I just want to see it published on this document. I'll go back and check. I think it probably said spring of twenty-three, but I'll double check. We factored it in.
Well, my comfort would be that we get through the design process understanding what we're, totally want, what you want to have as alternatives or alternates or whatever. And have an idea of the amount that the contractor wants to charge us before we issue bonds. So that, I would think that would be, that would be my comfort. As opposed to just blindly saying, okay, let's plan on issuing the eight point four and start cutting the money. Chase it. So in effect, what you're suggesting is we would go with the bond of twenty-four.
Yes, I'm conflicted about that because we just issued the eight point four twenty-three, we didn't use at all. And it's cheaper than what it would be if we waited a year. Why wouldn't we do that?
What's cheaper?
If we bond next year as opposed to twenty-four, if we, if we issue the full thing, if we issue the full amount, but we intentionally try to spend less throughout the process. It's going to be cheaper if we do that by issuing the bond at twenty-three than if we do that by issuing the bond at twenty-four. Is it not theoretically assuming cost escalation?
I don't know. I can't tell you where the bond market's going to be, twenty-three or twenty-four.
Say though.
I mean, I, it's a word for our question. I think your question is a good one. I mean, I don't, I don't know what Tom Pauls or reading a random, okay, three?
Hi, um, so that's one of the things that Andy can work with us as far as like your interest rate risk um, and where he, they think the market's going to be. But I did want to mention, just because I was looking at the charter, it does say that any voted bond that's not issued within three years expires. The the approval expires. So just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, three years puts it out in a long way.
It does, but just wanted to point that out.
I'm not suggesting that wait that long.
So how do we get an estimate, like estimated answer to my question? Can Marie get that for us?
Well, we need something specifically to tell Andy, like, because right now, when we met with him, it was all very, well, we don't know, we don't have a timeline, we don't have an exact amount, we don't have a location. Um, so all he can really give us is theoreticals without firmer data.
Right.
But yes, we can ask.
My theoretical is, let's just call it the whole amount of the bond. You know, because if we were going to issue it in twenty-three, it would probably have to be for that full amount, right? Because we wouldn't have time to sort through anything else with enough.
We would have to do that.
Right, exactly.
Well, and it wouldn't make sense to phase it.
So I guess from bond standpoint, it's just, what do we expect the cost to be in twenty-three versus twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the rates will also be different.
Yeah, so, yeah. I mean, I don't know that he's going to be able to tell you that. I mean, he can look at this is what the feds are doing, this is what the bond market's doing, you know, maybe I can predict four months out, but I don't know if he can go a year. That might, that's probably too much magic ball.
Let me see. I'm just seeing if we can get any sort of educated guess. But if we can, we can. I don't mind to do it as soon as we can, yeah. I don't think there's a reason to wait. Doesn't sound like we can get compelling data that indicates we should wait and some lawyers approved it. I think if we're waiting and there's not a compelling reason to wait, it's not going to be a good look, yeah.
David?
Mary. With a CM involved, whether they're even or builders, their expertise leading past concept design could help bring you all up to some level of comfort. Here's what's trending in construction cost, here's what your building's trending in, come across, it won't be exact, obviously, until it's bid, but the, that side of the formula could be more clear to you from an expert builder standpoint. If, I mean, you went down the road a little bit and then you could decide to do the bonds when you, when you feel comfortable. Can you do it in series or can you do some in July and some in next July, or is that not possible?
The issuance cost would make it cost prohibitive.
Wow.
So really, I mean, I feel like we're still dancing around having the discussion about how we decide which location we're going to focus on here. So I'm wondering specifically from the two new members of council who haven't had a chance to weigh in yet on this discussion, do you guys have any questions while we have the two of them sitting here between the two sites and advantages and disadvantages?
I do. On the one document for eighty-one forty, it says that the area of square footage is eighteen hundred fifty, fifty square feet. On your, on the one document that you've provided for us.
Does that mean today's package or coming out?
This is today's. No, this is the one that was divided in the council package from Justin.
Just tonight?
Yeah. No, this was from Justin's package. And we got our packets from where?
Yeah, sorry, I don't get a paper back.
Oh, I'm sorry. So on this, it's on page, uh, well, first of all, it's on page eight of
From actual, and then our actual, the work session.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, got it.
So is everything in that document with eighteen hundred fifty square feet, is that all finished, fire department?
Eighteen thousand five hundred.
Eighteen, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand five hundred.
Yeah, eighteen thousand five hundred fifty. It is not all fire. There's some area for sheriff as well.
Okay, that's part of the, the twenty-two hundred square feet part that you had on here. Um, okay, for fire and sheriff, okay. And that's part of the nine million dollars on sheet eight, nine million five hundred twenty-six. Correct, yes. And then on the MAF site, you have a total area of fourteen thousand eight hundred forty square feet.
Correct.
And then the mezzanine, that's that's, that's included in fourteen eighty-four.
Correct.
And is there pros and cons? I haven't looked at the, the worksheet that Jamie was, Jamie has from a past packet, past packet. What are the pros and cons from the MAF site to the eighty-one forty? Or should I be more specific?
No, 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 I'm just trying to think through the big things that are comparable, who the issues would be maneuvering, site maneuvering on the main street side. The, that's a big thing. Public first responder, circulation patterns in and out of that station area and the street area, that's another issue. Separation of parking for fire staff, public sheriff and the public in general for the park, that was a complication or a con. That solution includes new bays with appropriate size criteria in terms of height and width and clearance and work areas around, but it also maintains the, the existing bays which don't conform to today's guidelines. So there is a compromise or a con to that. It was it was just the way it was because of the structure. So it was another thing. Another aspect to it, you can look at a lot of different ways, it's multi-level. So firefighter in the station on one level needs to get to hopefully another level, which adds time. So the maneuvering, not just the behavior of the people was an issue too. I'm going really from over here, Deb.
No, I mean, I, I looked at both points quite a bit today, and that's kind of what I was looking at. I was wondering, parking, um, safety of the people in the park, um, more getting, getting in and out of there.
So that's an up and running kind of thing. Now, move management, that's another thing.
Sure, one more time?
Move management aspect. So if we're going to renovate and add on to the main station, we have to move the firefighting operation out somewhere else or create a temporary solution and kind of jump around in the existing building, maintain a presence there.
Is that part, is that part of either, I mean, the eighty-one forty proposal, is there money set aside for that and?
Yeah, that cost impact included as well as that timing too. So when you look at the timing for construction over twelve to sixteen months, the simple one is on the MAF site where it's a green site, lay down area, getting to and from, all that's easy. It's not impossible by any means to do it at Main Street, it just takes a little more time. And that's why it's sixteen months for that burden. And so not only is it, you got to move in and out potentially, it takes more time, but all, both those equal one. And that's, and it feels a little lopsided because the square footage is better. Right from, if you look at that metric, at the main station, you're four thousand square feet more.
What I was looking at.
So you're, you're taking advantage of existing superstructure that's there. Really, that's all we're taking advantage of, but it's valuable.
Well, you look at both plans, and I'm sure you guys have been over there some million times. On page fourteen of the MAF project proposed, it's showing all the dorms, all the different rooms, and it really doesn't show that on the eighty-one forty. Are them, does that kind of flop over to eighty-one forty with kind of the same uh, design layout?
Layout, no, but the, the components of the program, the elements that are shown there
Right.
are the same things that would be working into the square footage at Main Street. And we lose a little efficiency because of multi-layered. We lose a little efficiency because we're hemmed in between existing walls, but it's made up by the square footage. But the program generally in space to space would be the same, or they function exactly the same from one location to the other.
Thank you. Very thin that you were looking for, as well as good information that you don't have. What I focused on the last couple days is the information. Um, there was one other thing that was a, I had a question on is some of these proposals have six bays, some have five bays, some have three bays. I mean, obviously, we got to work through that, and tonight might not be the night to answer that question, but we right? I mean, there isn't anything in stone.
Well, and I, I think, you know, the
Well, and I, I think, you know, the, the, you can, you can talk about it, but I think, I think when, when we, when we were at three bays. It was three full sub, full that, pull-through bays. Double bays, so.
Equivalent of six parking spaces and.
Even if it was three, it was gonna be six, okay, here, okay.
And, and both current designs, most recent designs have six.
Six, six wine, essentially.
Yeah, and we talked about disadvantages of eighty-one forty, but you talked about. And again, I don't know if you want.
I would like to hear the advantages of eighty-one forty. If you'd like to share that.
One is just the proximity to. Some of the risk in, in the city, you know, being downtown and being close to those buildings that, that are risk, being closer to. The retirement center, uh, just west. And just the community presence of, of being there, uh, and access to. The townships if, if we need to, uh, respond out of the city because. One of the cons of the, the map location is that a majority of calls are gonna have to come back through the city. Which, you know, at P track times is.
Is it tough?
Is certainly a challenge. The extra square footage gives us some flexibility in future. You know, use of, of the space or, uh, you know, mission that may develop. Not fully understood today.
Was there any talk ever about? And this is bad because it's a what-if, what-ifs are terrible, but if we annexed five hundred more homes or a thousand homes twenty years from now. Would either one, would both these stations be sufficient enough? Or what could, what kind of expansion would make these that they wouldn't be big enough in their current places? Or is that?
I mean, I, I think we've positioned it well for. Twenty-five years, I, you know, beyond that.
It's hard, I'm asking a possible question, but it is.
But I mean, we, and, and that's why, that's what has driven. The dorm space to sleep firefighters, the, um, office space for the conceptual administrative structure of the apartment in the future. The bay space for the, the apparatus needs.
For both locations.
Yeah. We did sacrifice some training space and some other areas that were, you know, some of the earliest versions. With a potential to add those back in at, of later date, either. Finishing unfinished space in eighty-one forty or adding on space in a sort of planned manner at a map site.
And the other two stations that we currently are with, they don't have. Classrooms or training facilities there that we can do on?
They do, uh, they're, they're smaller. One was originally proposed for.
So they could help.
Yeah, if, if you wanna get everybody to never, uh. Neither one of them are, are sufficient to. What we really. Fill them up currently and any expansion would exceed their, that capacity.
Just to add on to that point, we, or Main Street. Has the shell for the training space built into it, basically the byproduct of. Supporting the new apparatus, so it's a raw space. Easily converted and it's not coincidental necessarily, but it's the right size for full training, so.
That's the seventeen hundred fifty feet of unfinished?
Correct. They give you probably a free function area, restrooms and classroom space and storage that you would need.
Is that something we would bid as an alternate?
Yes, that would be a great, that would be one of those easy alternates to, you know, test the market. Cause we're gonna do the real word, which is finishing it quicker.
What?
I don't know if this is a question that we can't answer, but if it is. In looking at the two sites with the idea that, you know, we might wanna try to scale back the cost more. Does one of those sites offer a greater possibility for that than the other? I mean, I know there are so many factors, but like material costs or, you know, because I know. I mean, yeah, there, there may be too many factors to answer that question, at least tonight, but do you have a sense of that?
The answer is yes, you could scale back either one, but you have to look at the criteria of which we're designing from and. Choose which one you're willing to come out of. You have to take something out, have to give something away in order to reduce price. Where is that opportunity created? Probably at the main street side, you can probably, and I'm just winging it here, but there are a couple of things that we added in, there's. Telecommunications along. Got the name of that street up on high. There's telecommunications that we have to relocate, so there's just money in there for that to gain about four parking spots, that's. Relatively unimportant, but the parking spots equal the amount that we need for the fireworks, so. Can we live without that? I think it's four spots, uh, and save a pretty good chunk of money, that's to me one of the high on the list of where you cut costs. You know, maybe if it wasn't so important, have an alternative or a dedicated access into. Um, fire from public, you know, there's a bridge and entry system that. Not overly costly, but it's more than what you would see on the building on the ground. And I'd say you, you eliminate, I think we just get a little more creative when we have the time to exercise a lot of different option thoughts.
Joe, you have some questions?
Oh, no.
I was on a lot of original questions.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the either location, um. Actually, a lot of the things that were mentioned toward the end about, um, the main street is what I was thinking about, primarily, um. If we move to the map side, then. I think that that issue, it's gonna impact a lot of people. Those run, they're gonna run back through town, I mean, when those trucks go down Dexter Pinky Road, I hear them at my house. Two and a half lots away from Dexter Pinky Road. I assume it's, I mean, unless, unless, when the, when the trucks blown up, which country goes all the way into town and turns right on Central, turns up. I mean, the truck routes don't go that way, assuming, probably go through down Fifth Street, Fourth Street, Second Street. And it just seems like, you know, some of those streets. I just don't think that's a good situation to have the trucks go through there and it's gonna impact those people and, you know. So I was talking about U of M Stadium, right? Nobody that lives there can complain about Saturdays in, in Ann Arbor on game days, right? They know going in that there's gonna be a hundred thousand people in their neighborhood right before a game. Those people, if fire trucks start going past their house, they're gonna say, hey, wait a minute, what happened, you know, what changed here? Isn't necessarily buying into that. The people right now that are dealing with it from Main Street, it's always been that way, so, um. I think that's an issue, the other thing is the mention about downtown. We, we have had a fire recently, I was, I can't remember how long ago it was, but there was a fire in one of the buildings downtown. And the smoke damage took out the two buildings on either side of it as well. So those buildings are really susceptible to having. Fire quickly impact a lot of those buildings. You know, there's that plaque on the one building for the, uh, Sportsman's Bar from, that fire was about the, you know, the fire station right there. In speaking with residents, the one resident that, I tried to be very open-ended when I said, do you have any concerns? Somebody said, you know, what do people ask about? I said, well, some people asked about fire station. And the only response I got back on that, one person says. Said, why would they move it up to, to the other side of town across from that, you didn't see the sign? He said, you know, aren't they gonna have to drive in town for the traffic? So that's only one person and only one response, but, um, that, that's really the things that I've seen. I think of the downtown and Cedars, the building are most vulnerable. You know, I'm not worried about the buildings in Westridge or Pure Farm or Dexter Crossing, because they've been built relatively newer construction. I, I would worry about a, you know, house that might be a balloon construction downtown and could go up relatively quickly and it would be considered. By me the most vulnerable, along with the concentration in their current community, so.
It is seven o'clock, our last thoughts here, yeah? Questions for David or Doug, let's go take your time to come in. My plan is to have this back on the first meeting in January on the regular agenda unless council wants to do it on workshop, but I think. It's also time to regular the agenda. January, whatever first meeting days are. And then I, I have a repeat item.
Justin, can you do what you've done in the past and the packet with like the upcoming?
Yeah. David, thank you for your time, thanks for making the trip.
Oh, great to be here.
Good information as always, Doug, appreciate your presence as well.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that my direct reference to that one? I'd like to call the city's Dexter City Council meeting on Monday, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two to order. And ask that, um, everybody rise for a pledge of allegiance. Find some news, please, I appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that everybody stands. Do you stand? Three, four days ago at some rate, and I. Uh, we lost, um, former member of our team, former resident and friend of the city, Paul Cousins. And, um, I didn't know that when obviously we put the agenda together, but. If you would all, um, share in a moment of silence, especially I'd like to. Just ask for ten seconds of silence and pause. I mean, cause he passed, uh, some rate. Thank you, appreciate that, that last call. And please call the role, noting that, um, Sanan and Zach and Adam all have excused absences.
Griffin. Here. Uh, Schlau.
Here.
Son of Pharaoh.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Keddie.
Okay. You have four in front of. Uh, item C is approval of the meeting minutes.
Only considering the next second.
Moved by Jamie, second by Ryan, and you roll. Jamie, any comments on the?
I had to make sure the motion's under, uh. And. Two, we're really in the council world, I just wanna make sure that that was. After reflection and then maybe just start remembering, so there was. A motion from Michelle, support for me to read off the rule and postpone further, then we had a discussion. And we, then we wanted to table it, so then did we see that again later?
Yep, under nine, or at the end of the meeting, sorry. After, after.
And then to read it out, okay, got it, okay, yep, I'm with you.
Well, I took a look at that multiple times too to make sure if it, I think it's good, or good enough. Any other comments on the minute, Bob?
I don't really.
And go with it, Liz. Okay, uh, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes.
Hubbard, yes, Griffin, yes, Schlau.
Yes.
Son of Pharaoh.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Hey, motion carries. Under prearranged participation, we have our parks ADA audit presentation, Jennifer Morris from O H M is here to, uh. Do that presentation.
Thank you very, thank you very much. See a few familiar faces, but it's nice to, to meet the rest of you. Just really, oh, there you go, okay, just so they, alright, I'm sure I'm gonna say this, but I'll do my best. So, um, anyway, thank you very much for inviting us to come tonight. And to present the findings from the parks accessibility audit, as Sean said, my name is Jennifer Morris, I am a project manager of O H M Advisors. So we were tasked with auditing your park system for accessibility, looking at your seven cars. And, um, the, the task was really to kind of take a relatively high level look at the parks. Uh, but to give you at least some assistance moving forward as to what would be a short-term versus a long-term recommendation. So what I'm gonna go through tonight is I'm gonna go through kind of some of the, the checklist that we evaluated or reutilized. And then some of the short-term recommendations, the long-term recommendations are in the report, which I believe is in the packet. Um, so I basically have already gone through that, the agenda. The next slide, please. So our approach and tools, you guys, which is the next one. There are a number of tools that we could have used for this audit, but because A, parks are relatively passive. And also because of the task of keeping this somewhat, as I said, high level. We really focused on, um, from the ADA checklist, looking at accessibility approach and entrance. Because obviously that's an issue within each one of parks. And then we skipped the other items, because even though you have, um, the portages in the parks. That's not considered a public to, so we could not factor that in. Um, and then access to other items really wasn't its, um, an issue. But we did also look at the play areas as a recreational checklist. Go on to the next one. So the priority one, the approach and entrance, focus on the park in an exterior access routes, there are twenty-one total checklist items. But once again, you've got all of those applied because of the types of parks that you have, so we really looked at ten of those parks and used an observation method. We did not actually take a level out there and, and measure everything because of the, uh, the type of projects that we were actually tasked with. Next slide, please. So I'm, I'm gonna read through this, but these are the ten, um, priorities that checklist items that we actually evaluated on the site. Next slide, please. And then, uh, as I mentioned, we've got the play areas or recreational checklist, this is just a snapshot from that. These are all from the Americans with Disabilities Act. Go to the next slide. So here we look to the play areas focusing on accessibility to and from the equipment. And once again, there are seventeen checklist items, but only three reutilized. Because, uh, the others would have required measurement tools and the like, so these are once again just observation checklist items. And the next slide actually once again just goes through those, the three questions that we had to, to answer for each one of the seven parks. Then we actually went kind of a little bit, we dug a little bit deeper when it came to the benches and the, um. The benches and the. Oh my gosh, pick the names, thank you, wow, that word was just not coming to me. So these are from the US Access Board and the Architectural Barriers Act. So we looked at those two in particular, because one thing that was definitely very impressive when I, um, visited all of your parks. For the number of each that you had, it was really very impressive, because a lot of parks that you go to. If you have one or two, you're, you're lucky, you guys really have quite a boost, so it's definitely very impressive. Next slide. Okay, so on September fifteen, we went out and did a site visit of every single one of your parks. Then subsequently came back because we wanted to double check a few things and take additional pictures. So we, um, going through each one of those checklist items, we actually then did a, an overall evaluation. And then you'll see in the next few slides after this, that we actually went part by part. So one thing we noticed with. So one thing we noticed with the access points is that, um, you know, the parks have great separated access. So in other words, you know, you don't have to pop a curb to get into the park. However, in each one of these cases, it requires you when you're parking to actually get into the roadway to get to a sidewalk to get into the park. So that was one thing that we, we definitely noticed. Next slide, please. Accessible parking, um, there you have some, um, but signage is limited when it comes to like urban accessible signage. Um, I know that in Monument Park, there is the, the barrier free space across the street. Um, it is spaced for urban accessibility, but is not signed for it. Um, and we did find out after the fact, the parking next to the Lions Park play structure, it's not actually city owned. But we did at least just conclude that because it is technically a, it's a barrier free space as far as the dimensions, but it's not signed as such. Next slide. Benches, you have, as I said, a lot of benches in this, along with your picnic tables are really weird. It would be so easy for you to bring them into compliance for accessibility because so many of them are along pathways like you've got in Monument Park. Um, in other places, um, in, um, you know, the passive portion of Lions Park, they're along the pathway. Um, but there are various components to actually bringing those into compliance for full accessibility. So you've got great opportunities there. Next slide. Same with picnic tables. Um, there is actually only one fully accessible picnic table. You've got two that are accessible, but only one that is easily, uh, reached via a pathway that actually gets to it. So that's the one in that number three floor. Next slide. Play areas, um, now this probably doesn't come as a surprise, but I mean, you know, a lot of the play areas, they're aging. Um, they, they're limited as far as the age groups and, um. You know, I know with the, the Parks Commission, we talked about, you know, the surface of these play areas, they're supposed to be firm and stable. That's, you know, kind of the definition of that can be a little bit nebulous because you think that you want to fluff up the mulch. Because that's actually softer when the kids fall, but from an accessibility standpoint, it's completely the exact opposite. So you want them actually to be, to be firm and make sure that when someone wheels over with a wheelchair or whatever the case may be. They, uh, they don't sink or, you know, fall into a hole or whatever the case may be. Um, and then, you know, we got a little bit into just the structures themselves. And I think it's, you know, it's known that they're, they're not fully accessible. So the transfer stations and accessible equipment would be required if you actually wanted to have a fully accessible park structure. Next slide, please. And then the short term recommendations, um, we have them for each of the parks. I'm actually just to save a little bit of time here, because I know I've got no fairly short story. I'm not going to go through each one of these because there is redundancy amongst all of them. And it's having to do with providing that barrier free parking space. We've added a cost for each one of these, and the reason that like a barrier free space, there's such a huge range is because if it needs paint, it's five hundred dollars. If you actually need to pave and install a goal, and we're talking about this within the fire station. I mean, it's expensive to put in a brand new, uh, parking space. So that's where we've got up to twenty thousand. And then for the picnic tables and the benches, once again, it would be fairly easy for you to make those barrier free. But there are a number of things to consider. Do you relocate them closer to a pathway? Put them on a concrete pad and then provide an accessible space next to the bench? Um, or do you provide a pathway to where they're located now? The same thing with the picnic tables. Now picnic tables, to make them fully accessible, you really need to replace them. Um, you know, some communities have installed just longer boards so that you could actually wheel up to them. But you need to then look at, you know, obviously expanding the, the pad. So there are a number of factors that you have to look at. Um, and once again, this is the part why we just indicated, you know, square yards, how much you would cross for the pavement. Because there are so many variables as to what you would want to do. And if you would want to actually replace benches and picnic tables, you know, obviously then that's an additional cost as well. I talked previously about the surface of the, um, with play areas. Um, that would be something you'd have to look at, uh, from the get-go when you're putting down the mulch every year and making sure that it is, is properly tamped. And then we did notice in a few cases that the garbage cans, um, because they're not fixed. They ended up being relocated into the pathway. So our recommendation there is just to ensure that your pathway remains fully accessible, just secure them off of the pathway. So we've got these recommendations for each one of the parks and I know that they're, they're in your packet. Um, so I don't know that there's, there's any need for me necessarily to go through each one of them. I will say when it comes to your first report, we drove, we drove around the community until we finally found it. It's a great little park, but. Like to do, as I said, instead of going through each one of these, I do know that shouldn't happen in your packet, is to open it up. If you guys have any questions of me, um, I would certainly be more than willing to answer.
Justin, did we have, um, take a look at the trails at all? From the perspective of, I remember Todd commenting on, but just so often to people the rest of their walking.
They, I don't know that we, I don't know that those are able to get distance between seating areas.
I mean, it's certainly something that we could, we could go back and, and look at, but no, we did not actually measure the, the distance between benches.
What was the Parks Commission feedback on this hearing for dinner?
Uh, I think we were kind of confused by the playground service, uh, conundrum of firm impact versus.
Shocking.
Yeah. Yeah. Impact absorb things. Um, like we talked a little bit, I mean, I had a specific question about benches and I, like, I think the ones that we have down that North Creek. Or I felt like when my kids were younger, I was always afraid they were going to slip right through the back. So we talked about even what specific design of a bench might be accessible. I talked about, um, like the orientation of the bench. So I think when you're at Monument Park, some of the benches face out like the street. But you think, okay, if you're there at the park, maybe one, one actually faces in. So it sounded like the micro bench is where your half of it faces out. And then the other half faces in and so kind of talked a little bit about accessible versus inclusive event. So with the design kind of taking it one step further.
For, for some of the benches, uh, if there isn't, um, something for the, um, cane to hit, uh, for those doors, there's visually impaired. Um, the bench might not be accessible from that standpoint. Um, and so there are benches where it have, you know, that, that is they have a gear down to the ground. So that way when it hits, it hits and. No, there, there's an object there.
Cause there's, there are very free requirements and then there are the universal design. So it would depend on kind of which level you were wanting to try and achieve.
What about the equipment itself? Do they have equipment that is?
The play equipment?
Yeah. Did you take a look at that at all?
We did take a look at that and, um, that is, there, there wasn't. Trying to think if there was anything that was technically barrier free and I don't remember there being, you know, possibly one of the components at Lions. Might have been, once again, yeah, but once again, it's, you can't get to it.
Right, okay.
Just as a random aside, we mentioned the signage and hard to find things. I've been meaning to mention this. There was a sign somewhere next to your hour, I don't know, before effort turns into being, whereas Warrior Free Park, so that's kind of like. Does not exist anymore. That's still hanging out.
It's actually funny that you mentioned that because I meant to. Yes, you were actually wondering if we did.
Yeah.
Sister. Well, thank you for your good work.
Oh, not a problem.
Any other questions or, all good? Thank you. Okay.
All right, you are most welcome. You are most welcome. Have a great night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Clear down to item E. Which is approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening? Motion. Move back, so. Second. Second last line here. Thank you both. A discussion needed on the agenda. See none? Please go look to the agenda.
Son of Pharaoh.
Yes.
Schlau.
Yes.
Griffin, yes. Hubbard, yes. Keo.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, declaration of conflicts of interest. Do you have any conflicts of interest to clear this evening? Okay, great. We have no public care, it's an item G, so we're down to item H, which is non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening under non-arrang? Seeing none, give you your chance here pretty soon. Anybody online? Is there anybody online that would like to speak this evening under non-arrange? I have nobody. No hands? Thank you, Joshua. Well, none. We're down to communications under item I. Are there any comments on the meeting calendar? Not hearing any yet. I'm going to introduce a communication, uh, this evening that I received over the weekend. And, um. I know this isn't official city business, but I was informed that. The captain of the Dexter debate team. Exists as one of our student representatives and she's here this evening, Bonnie Keating. And then over the weekend in Dexter High School and North Creek Kino School, the vaters became the first ever. District-wide debate program to win all three divisions. And if I have it right, it's middle level novice and varsity at the state tournament. Other school district, according to the information I received, is ever come in first place in all three. And our student representative is captain and I would like to. Congratulations. I'm going to forward to this, um, communication, but if you would please add it into the package for record or whatever, I would appreciate that. Good job. And who does that?
It's a very long day. I, um, I'm still happy for everyone on the team, our, our two seniors, uh, Griffin and I, we're the first team to win.
Okay.
It was, it's, it's really difficult to win all categories.
Well, great. Good leadership. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, first report this evening, which from our public services superintendent, welcome, Tim.
How's the region this morning to, tonight?
Good, Neil.
Okay, thanks. Uh, two reports in front of you guys. Is there any questions?
Yeah, on, uh, on page sixty-six, it's, um, you got after hours trickery filter problem? With media?
After hours, the trickery filters backwash on the arm.
Yeah.
So we had a plug and it's been given the high rolls and they took it down toward our part where everything, there we go, even. For a week.
Still learning the new.
Yeah. So, but it's, uh, in, in fact, we did the one and we actually did the other one too, just so we could run, run, put that on a routine.
Do we have, uh, V F D relocation bid request?
Yeah, it's out there. Uh, I think, I did the double check. I think it's due at the end of the month where they'll have people coming or log bits back, uh, from F and B.
Okay.
Figure out, we have a couple different solutions, but that's the main one. We're just. I'm worried now that it might be a little more expensive because everything's been going on. So if that's the case, we'll take a look. There's another alternative running ways.
So that we'll see that in January, we'll need information back on that first year.
Yeah. That's it. I got a couple things. Um, Zach's not here, but we've been looking into the farmer's market signs. So right now we have a big sign that has everything on including the month's operation, days and times. We have, uh, every spot now has three signs, which is the farmer's market, indicating the farmer's market, the date and times, the date times, or excuse me, the times and the days. So the signs themselves look pretty good condition. I, unless you guys requested, I talked to Justin about it. I don't see any means of trying to put new signs up until those ones go bad. And I'll just do it as one sign with the dates, the times and everything on there. So. Um, rumor came out for the pool, the high service pump, well, I've pulled high service pump yet, but they're cleaning the process of cleaning the water right now. Uh, the whole high service pump probably within a day or two, um, everything goes back to their shop. For the next month or so, we will be giving evaluation on the pumps and stuff and then put everything back, you know, order. The, the handrail going to the wall over there was completed last week. Um, with a few things left still, um, and at least pickup was completed last week.
Do you have any questions for Tim? And questions on consent items before we get to the consent items? Some purchases.
Yeah, thanks. Good reminder.
Oh, you're welcome.
Uh.
I can tell you that question.
So K five, purchasing the backhoe and trading in a current backhoe. I guess I was just wondering if there was a reason we were trading it and not doing dub deals now that we're able to sell personal property.
So we, we, we took a look on dub deals and compared kind of what is already posted, the amount that's selling for. And it's nowhere near what is being offered for, for the trading value. Uh, and especially due, due to like the age, you know, it's, it's a two thousand and one backhoe. So, you know, the, the things that are selling are even more recent and still not selling for twenty-four thousand or, or the amount that we're looking for.
And then just, I think all these things indicated that they were part of the replacement plan.
Yeah, they, they, they were all much greater.
So it, it just strikes me that they are all in the consent agenda at the same time. That's just, we're getting to the year end and we want, or well, I guess it's calendar year end. Is there a reason the timing is that for all of them?
Correct, it's actually had some time to.
The big things too, this is the time because everything's such backward. We're talking about a backhoe that might not be here until August. We might be able to get to a small one, you know, we have with the forklift itself. They, they have six available that are on, well, they're still ordered. But, um, if we act now, we probably will get one with six instead of waiting. I think they said fifty weeks after that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I, I mean, really it's not, you know, we're on officially, you're not calendar year, so, um, it, it is just better that now we're, we're gonna, like, hold that, so, yeah, so.
Thank you for your good work.
Thanks, you too. Good work. Appreciate it.
Uh, next up is our community development manager. Michelle, how are you doing?
I'm fine. I'm really doing it. Just to make sure I'm, so with me. House counsel this evening.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm glad that you're all doing well. And before I go into any updates, do you have any questions for me?
Do you remember when we made the RFP for the D D A as of due?
We made it due for December twentieth.
Okay.
Okay, um, I had a question, um, directed to me earlier today regarding Corbin Farms. And, um, uh, when their next meeting would be, as I believe you all know, they decided they do want to, yeah, next into the city. Excuse me. Excuse me. And the subsequent conversation with the Dexter Township Supervisor. Dexter Township is not going to want a four twenty-five agreement. They feel that that's something, a tool that would be used if this was a larger development. But being it's just more personal, one user. The cost benefit isn't there for going through a, in the four twenty-five agreement. So they will. They will support the request by. By Foreman Farms to be annexed for the purpose of connecting to our utilities. We will meet with them on January eleventh to sort of lay out the timeframes. Excuse me, and start to. Form a cost. The costs that are going to involve. They are all ready to rear over, as you know, that there's at least a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade our list station at Westridge. They will be responsible. For the costs and responsibility for designing and engineering. The extension of the. Of the utilities as well as the construction. We will be reviewing those. Reviewing with them all the way along with the process, so. But that's where we are with the current environment questions and that one.
So is.
Go ahead.
Is there a cost to the city in any way, a diagram, just you're navigating?
There will, since there isn't a four twenty-five, there won't be. There might be minor attorney just looking over the, whatever documentation we sent to the state, but it's certainly not as involved. But there will be engineering. We require a thousand dollar non-refundable. Request fee for implementation. And I have also already. Started to let them know there will be what we call the escrow for review that we're going to have with our engineers to review the documents.
And there will be staff time watching sanitary sewer and water or whatever is going from. Out by wherever it is across to wherever it is going. We won't do that in the vacuum, I'm sure that Tim and Eric are out there. Although there's going to be OHM review on all the plans also.
Yes.
Which is developed over the first.
As Sean brought up, the DDA did release a very comprehensive strategic plan update and request for proposals. That is due December twentieth. That's after this month's DDA meeting. But that gives staff time to review and put together a summary of the different proposals. And the DDA can look over everything and make a decision. The second street subarea plan in your packet. Was the revised proposal that came from Carla Wharton. And it compared a three-day charrette process for public engagement to a, what Carla Wharton called a game board alternative. It's a, it's again, it's an interactive type of process that. Allows basically of a big map. This would be second street corridor. And the residents get to move pieces for different types of uses. Structure that they've been putting in place to ensure that that, that the residents weren't only allowed to choose single-family residential. We all know that if you give that choice, if that is part of the choice, that's the only thing that will be chosen. It's the least. The least intense. Perception until a development goes with next door to you and then it is. So. Planning Commission. Liked the game board approach more than they liked the charrette. But of the four, the four, the five members that were present. We had three people that were out. They didn't support conducting the study at this time. They are super happy with a twenty thousand dollar break stack, especially since the. The update of the ordinance itself. Was about fifty thousand dollars. The difference is, is we're talking about a subarea plan that's very public engagement heavy. There's always more time involved in something like that. So they didn't take action, they postponed it, they wanted to wait till the full orders together. And see when the rest of the numbers fall. So that, that may end up coming to you or may not. So if you've got any input you'd like to provide to us, let me know, or just send me an email. At one of your last meetings, you questioned.
And that would be a recommendation to do the study for that, right?
Planning Commission would make a recommendation to City Council, yes. And Council would have final action. Of order. At, not your last meeting, but I believe it was the meeting before, actually it was off way back in October. There were several questions raised about food trucks. Grace has done a really good job putting together some information and we're just finishing the final refinement. And there'll be a complete packet included with, with a report at your next meeting. But the gist of it is, the current ordinance is. Does not allow food trucks in long-term situations. It's, it's all geared for them in special event situations. So whether that's a resident, a subdivision, a business. Or something the city wanted to do, for example. That would come under a special event permit. After you get all the information, obviously, if council has a desire to change that ordinance, that's certainly something that we can look at. So. If you consider right now, unless you've got any other questions for me?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, good work. We are down to page, on to page three of our agenda, which we watched on share before. And we have Commander Keith Lawrence here. May I thank for joining us this evening?
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in person.
Good morning, Mr. Stewart. Congratulations, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, council. It's nice to see some familiar faces, I've seen many of you a lot. It's nice to see, I mean, it's nice to meet the rest of you. So I had the chance, I was originally coming today to talk about contracts. Because I think some of you may have questions on the contract, contract pricing. Regardless if you do your job, we can answer those to the best of my ability. But I also watched the last board meeting that was presented, there were some issues that were brought up that I'd like to address. And just going through, kind of step by step or things, did all of you receive? The, I think Lieutenant Hothead tapped the traffic stop data for Dexter City. So all of you had a chance to take a look at that, I would hope. I don't know if there's any questions, but I'd like to go through a few things. So in the meeting itself, there were things brought up as far as our traffic stops being in here towards maybe equipment violations. And that kind of thing, and then the information that was presented to each of you, I think outlines the fact that that's just not the case. It's more than just equipment violations, the vast majority, at least the three months, picking back at speeding was that the vast majority or over fifty percent of all the stops. But nonetheless, moving violations were respected in September twenty, of this year, ninety-five percent of those stops that we made were moving violations. In October, it was ninety percent. And then in November, it was about eighty-four percent. And overall, for the year, you know, you look at speeding is about thirty-three percent and then the rest, you know, most of it is moving violations with equipment violations. From January through November in Dexter City alone was just a three and a half percent. Which just equipment violations. I'd also like to touch on equipment violations as a motor vehicle, it's a, it is a violation. And sometimes it's not. Those are typically fix-it tickets. Those are not a cost type ticket, if somebody has a headlight or a taillight or something like that, if there's a safety concern. For people driving without their headlight or taillight. But also it is just a fix-it ticket, so if somebody gets a ticket for any kind of equipment violation, you have the opportunity to fix that headlight, taillight or whatever the vehicle violation was. You know, so, and again, there was a comment also made that we don't have the time to go into every area to address speeding violations. Here's what I'll say, as the commander of our police services division, I will tell you. That if there's ever an issue with service that you get, you don't get an answer from your operational lieutenant. I would hope with the relationship that we have with many of you, the relationship that I have with many of you, you would reach out to me and let me know. Because I will address it. Every concern that citizens bring up or council brings up, we'll address. If there's an issue in certain communities where people are speeding more so than not, bring it to our attention, we'll address it. So I would hope that maybe the context behind that, this is an assumption. Hate to base anything based on assumption, but I would hope that if there were issues with, we can't be in every area at every time. You know, Dexter City contracts for three and a half deputies, Dexter Township three and Webster two. We can't be in every place at any one time, so if we're, if we're focusing on a specific neighborhood, we can't be in another neighborhood, we can't be in Main Street or Ann Arbor. We can't be in certain areas or in another area, so I would hope that that was the intent behind that comment. But I don't know, but again, if there's any issue with our service, please bring it to my attention if you're not getting the satisfaction through. Whoever you're dealing with, whether it be your sergeant or operational lieutenant. I think most of you or some of you have my contact information, if you can share it along with to the other council members that have it. Have it. Take any kind of call or any kind of issue, I'd like to address it. Traffic stops, I'm not going to go to why we make traffic stops, I think that was addressed, I'm happy to answer any questions if the why is brought up. Descriptors in the report was another thing that was brought up, descriptors that. Based on seventy-six hundred day employee. So I don't know if this was the first time that something like this was brought up as far as descriptors. When I was your Dexter sergeant here back from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen. And even back then, I would list physical descriptors or I would list those descriptors. Those are public knowledge, those are in our reports, if you pull our reports, that's information that would be listed in there and would stay in there. It's not necessarily subjective, it's more factually based. And we will continue to list that. Now, here's what I'll say, the partnership that we have with you all and the other entities that we serve are community partners. If you don't want that listed in your executive report, just let us know, we won't list it. We don't have to list it. But I would hope that, I would think. If there's something, if there's a crime that's unsolved, one of the ways that we solve crimes is through, sometimes it's those physical descriptors. It could be race, it could be gender, it could be age, it could be build, it could be hair type or color, it could be any one of those descriptors. And that's typically why we'll list those in reports typically. And the other thing I'll say is when we were dealing with the home invasions out here. If you look back to the main reports, the main reports listed physical descriptors of the white male with a medium build, approximately five-seven with this color hair. And then it also listed when you guys had the indecent exposure person that was on the trail. It associated that person back to the person that we do in your home invasions. So again, many times those descriptors are in there for a specific reason. But I will reiterate, if it's something you don't want in reports, just let us know. This is a partnership that we have, so if it's something you don't want, let us know. And then there was another comment too, as far as researching, you know, for your own police agency, the sheriff's going to do, the sheriff's office is going to do. I would counter that with, we've always been, you all have been good community partners with us, we've had this partnership for a long time. Again, we don't just do what we want to do, we do this in collaboration and partnership with you. So I will say it again, if there's ever an issue that any of you have and you're not getting the service that you need from our deputies, from your sergeant, from your lieutenant. My number is available, my phone is on twenty-four seven. Don't hesitate to reach out if you're not getting what you believe you deserve, do it. And I will take it to the next level too, if you're, if you're researching another police agency because of cost. I would welcome that all day long. Service is an issue, if you're not getting the service that you need or deserve, that's where I step in and I'll make sure that happens. So I believe it, I'm confident in the service that we provide. One hundred percent. I'm confident in the price that we charge. So I would welcome, you know, that endeavor if that's what you decide to do, so I'm not concerned about that at all. I would actually welcome the diligence if that's the case, but again, service is something that if you're not getting it, let me know. I can't say that enough. But I think that pretty much addresses that, questions for me as far as that goes?
Wow, kind of a good question. I understand the, in terms of, in the reports identifying, you know. Demographics of a person. Is there a difference between that and like, because I agree, I remember the other reports that said, when you were looking for the home invasion, name, decent exposure. In those reports though, did they say like, what I'm specifically getting at is the irate female. That type of descriptor. Is that something that you think is necessary or can we differentiate between demographics and attitude, if that makes sense?
So is it the irate word?
Yeah, I feel like that's, it's the irate word.
Well, I think, and I'll answer, I think the separation from that individual, from that location. The irate piece associates why we separated that person from that location and then took her home to separate from. That address. And that's why, so it's not just, well, if we didn't put it in there, well, why are they taking that female to Ann Arbor City? Why would they do that? If you include that one word, I think it kind of articulates a little bit, and there was a little bit more detail in it other than the irate female.
Sure, yeah.
But there was a little bit more description in there as far as. Why we entered here. And many times what we'll do is we'll want to separate somebody from a location, so we don't deal with that at this location anymore. If the person doesn't belong necessarily or it gets out of control, if we can take that person back to maybe where they reside, it separates from where they are currently. So. That is your question.
Yeah, I may follow up with you, just.
For sure.
Because you said we could and I'd like to have a conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Joe? On the description of the people that's on the report. I basically did exactly what he said, I went back and looked at all the reports for the whole year. So. I agree, there was the unknown suspect at the time, described that person, that was important. I couldn't find any other descriptions in any of the other nine or so reports over the course of the year. Where there were unknown people described at all like that. In any way other than unknown suspects. So I don't know if that's just a matter of, in all those other cases. There, the officer that investigated just had no information about that person at all. The last report that we got seemed inconsistent with previous reports. So. I guess I'd like to sit down with you and look at those particular items and talk about the way those are there. And just convey some of the feedback that I've heard in talking to members of the community.
Sure.
So, and I think that's important because. Because you're available to us, right? And so we should take that opportunity to be able to, to give you that, that feedback and stuff and. I do appreciate this information very much, I think this is, is really helpful. At one time in the long past, we had set up, the sheriff was monitoring speeding. I think it was down Forest Street. And at that time, the only other thing that I was thinking about that was, that's not in here particularly was. We were looking at the speeding because it's a downhill road and there's often a lot of times a lot of speeding there. One of the things that they recorded was the. The hometown of the people that were longer, you know, because part of the question was, I think Mayor Keo even said, you know, some of the issues we have in our neighborhoods. We got to talk to our neighbors because that's mostly the people that are there. We had a significant number of people that were on, like I said, I think it was four. That were not Dexter residents, I mean, it was like twenty-five percent Dexter residents and the rest were people that were driving through there. So that'd be the only other thing I'd be interested in, but this is fantastic. This is, this is very good data, I appreciate it very much.
And we appreciate the questions and the concerns because that's how we come to the conclusion, we provide the factual data. You know, so anytime there are questions, again, we welcome it. And that's how this kind of comes with fruition, so we can, we can address it in or meter, whatever we do.
Yep. So I, we've also heard, I know as a council, we all received an email. Expressing concerns about the content of this police report and others, not. For the reasons that were discussed in council in terms of the descriptors being included and the way the events were described for the actual events themselves. So for example, that there are people in this community who. Were acting in an aggressive and threatening manner. were acting in an aggressive and threatening manner towards you and whoever, if it was not you, towards law enforcement.
I sit behind a desk now, so probably wasn't many.
Right. So I know there are people concerned specifically what's happening at seven sixty-one day. And I can appreciate that. Maybe that's a delicate conversation. I don't know how much of that conversation has happened in public. I've had a conversation with Lieutenant Hunt about it. That was the motivation behind my, if you see something, say something day letter to the community. I want to know if I don't know what our role is in helping you do that job of protecting the health, safety and welfare of citizens with respect to whatever comes into the community or whatever is already in the community that is posing a potential threat. So I want to thank you for what you do. I want to let you know that there are people who are concerned about this particular development and I don't know what how to address their concerns, other than just say, based on conversations I've had with Lieutenant Hunt, hearing from you, I feel confident in your ability to do your job. I don't know what more to say to them. But I suppose, just like you're saying, if if we think doing something from you, I'm I'm sure you know that if you need something from us, or if there's something that we can be doing, please let us know, Justin, know, et cetera. I'm sure that's already happening, but.
Yeah, and and look for her to seventy-six fifty-one. We are working on setting up a meeting with Faith and Action and 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 the sheriff's office to to talk about some of the recent events and see what what we do.
Right. I mean, and the other point I want to make is that in absence of these summaries from you, I mean, this is what I consider a primary source. We unfortunately aren't, aside from this being included in the Sun Times News, we aren't getting local coverage of these types of events in our community. And I have covered the indecent exposure and the break-ins in separate articles. I'm just going to say for the record, everybody probably knows the editor of the Sun Times News, Doug Moran, sits on the board of directors with Faith and Action. I don't know if that has anything to do with what is being covered and how it's being covered at that development. But the last thing I want to do is censor a primary source when, for whatever reason, this is the only way residents are learning about events in the community that are of interest and concern to them.
Well, I think, Jamie, it's important that we have these outcomes. I mean, I mean, those are, these are facts, right? These are facts as reported as you've called by a primary source or whatever. I called Commander Flores today and read him the email that we all received, consent to Faith and Action and the seven council members as well as the, what was it, info at Avalon or wherever that email is. I have not had a chance to reach out to anyone at Avalon to make sure that they actually received it. I trust somebody at one of those Faith and Action emails probably did. But I think, I think that the more we talk about it, the more we're aware of it, the better off we are. And part of it is the, the there's a sensitivity to all of this. I mean, if if I go out to hit my garbage can in the morning and I look down and there's a sheriff officer parked out there, there's a pardon, it says, huh, what's going on? Is there anything going on? Now, the lights aren't glaring and maybe there's nobody running down the street. But it makes you wonder what's going on, right? It doesn't mean that they shouldn't park there. I'm not saying that I'm not parking there, it is a way there. They're doing similar sort of thing on each and every street throughout the city whenever they're able, including at Long Dan Point. Some people might say, well, that increased presence creates tension. It could, I suppose, it could, I suppose. But I think we have to let, as you said, we have to let them do their job. I I have known you long before you had Commander in front of your name and there's a lot of good people there. And, you know, we are six months into the grand opening of of that new development. And the facts are that there's been some, you know, some events there that need to be understood and and talked through. And I think Justin's meeting is a good one. And after you're you're getting that set up, I encourage you to get that set up sooner than later. I I think we should have regular communication there. But, you know, the fact that these are in this report has caused us to try to react, to ask some questions. And some of the questions that this resident asked, if we have trouble answering them, I think Keith has said, reach out to him and share the share the question so we can get the right answers back to him. I'm going to forward this to you. I didn't do that this afternoon after we talked, but I attempted so that you can see it and maybe help us figure out how to get back to the question.
We may be about to say the same thing.
Oh, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, if if you are having conversations with with either Lieutenant Hunt or Mayor Flores, just try to CC me or keep me in the loop. That does help me understand what's going on in the community, what is being asked of our our sheriff's office.
You know, I would ask, if you, I would ask that if you're going to send anything, I mean, just include Lieutenant Hunt as well. He is your operational lieutenant. I have complete total faith in him. But again, if there's issues, then then I am here to CC to to address it. And I don't know if there's anything that I can address based on what you said. I appreciate what you said and the kind words. Just thank you for that.
That is not a fact. I was going to say, oh, I was just going to say that I I have been in free contact with the executive director of Avalon and she did also get that same email from the resident that sent it to us. And she has been in touch with Derek Jackson about it, just so you know.
Yeah, we have met with that that complex a few times. We've met with them. Just anytime any new complex comes in or anything like that, we will meet with them. It's, you know, it's what we do. And I will, you know, address what Mayor said. There are times that we'll sit, it's unfortunate in our profession that when you see us in a car, you see us in uniform walking into any place we walk into, people automatically think what's wrong. It's unfortunate, but we can't change that perception. We can a little bit at a time, one step at a time, by not always taking enforcement action and that kind of thing, but it doesn't matter. Truly doesn't matter. Anyplace you go, it's always what's what's wrong. But we can't change that perception. But I can tell you that there are people, whether it's in certain communities, whether it's in a neighborhood, a subdivision or that location, some that are happy to have us there. We always hear one of the biggest complaints that we get from citizens when I get phone calls and we don't see you enough. But then when you see us enough, then you ask, what are we doing here? It's always that that kind of double edged sword. So I know there are people that are happy that we're in there and then other people that are questioning why we're in there, so.
For specifically going back to the October report, what, in reading through it, it didn't indicate to me that there was arrest or citation. Do you know if anything like that happened?
I don't believe so. And see, when you look at some of those other reports, you'll see that if if there's an arrest made, typically you won't see those indicators there because an arrest was made. A lot of times we'll include the indicators in there for people to pay attention to it. Because if you're having home invasions, you want to know that it's a white male, it's not somebody else. Or if you have a situation where there was an assault, where several people may have jumped another person, you're going to want to know what those indicators are. So in that case, I don't believe so. And that's why it was listed.
I looked, I just flipped through last month and I looked at the page and it looks like October was a pretty slow month in Dexter, as I'm sure most months are. Pardon me?
It's not a bad.
No, I understand, I understand. The thing is, when we get the reports, right, I mean, at the very top, it says noteworthy events in Dexter City during the last month. Part, part of the question is, how do I square this? How do I square the, the note? How, which things get decided to be noteworthy or reportable and be in this way? Because really, I mean, to your point, Jamie, the the paper isn't really going to go and probably pull police reports to try and figure out what's going on. They're going to look at this here because it's available. So so the immediate disconnect that I had is I say, okay, it's noteworthy, but no citation version, no arrest was made, it wasn't that one. Now, like I said, maybe it was a slow month and that was the only thing that stood out. Personally, I think it's okay to say nothing significantly noteworthy happened during the course of the month. So I don't know, but again, it's just when I read it, I thought, okay, what's going on here? How did this all fit? And I don't think we should live a type of a fear-based existence. I mean, even if this is an issue here, it wasn't an issue anywhere else, wasn't an issue in West Street, in Dexter Crossing or Walkabout Creek right next door. Granted, as Mayor Keogh said, we've got to keep an eye on things and make sure that they're addressed and don't become bigger issues. But we also don't want to blow things out of proportion also, so.
I appreciate you coming tonight.
Absolutely.
I should be available and taking the call later.
Always available. Are we going to talk about contracts? Are there any questions?
Question. Does anybody have any questions on the contracts? Later on, I'll agenda.
I I know there was one question asking about the allocation of the sergeant. And Mayor Flores about that, and you told me.
Yeah, so, so this goes back and and I don't know that any of you were part of it, I wasn't part of it either. But the original, the contracts all were created or made, the original police services steering committee, which will be, I don't want to say reenacted, but it'll be brought back in the first quarter of twenty-three. So somebody representative, whether that may be, can be a part of that. As far as your sergeant goes, you don't pay directly for the sergeant, him or herself. Every time you contract for six point seven, was the methodology where that came from, I'm not exactly sure, but six point seven deputies, you get a sergeant allocated to manage those. And then for every thirty-seven deputies, you get a lieutenant. Now, West Operations, in West Operations, because West is the Dexter Collaboration, SIO Manchester Collaboration, you don't even need that criteria, but it's it's beneficial. We need to have a lieutenant up here. So that lieutenant, so the sergeants and lieutenants, you don't pay directly for that comes out of the sheriff's general fund.
For I I know we paid one lump sum, like one hundred and seventy thousand or whatever it is per per deputy.
Right.
And obviously that includes a lot of stuff, cars, vacation time, training, sergeants.
Um, sergeants are different. I just want to be clear. So it's coming out of our general fund, so that's not even coming out of the P S U charge, but go ahead.
All right, fair enough. I I assume that there's some type of management that goes into, everybody needs to have a manager, supervisor, HR, all that kind of stuff. Do you know, I mean, is there like a number out there that says the average sheriff deputy salary, just salary, you know, maybe plus overtime or something? What that salary is for a sheriff deputy on average? And I know that's, maybe that's a tough question, but.
It's in the, currently it's in the sixties. Okay, I apologize, I can't give it to you. But yeah, I mean, it's public knowledge, it's not, it's not hidden. I mean, it's even on our website. But what that is, and I should know this. Maybe in here.
I apologize, I'm not trying to prejudge.
No, and it's okay. No, it's a, it's a valid question. It's a fair question. It's in the sixties. And when you throw in the fringes and that kind of thing. And here's what I'll say, this document, have you all seen it? It's hard to see, it's hard for me to see right up on it, but it's probably because I'm giving over, have my glasses with me. But you guys recall?
Yeah, that's in our patent.
Yeah, so that's the true breakdown, if you know. And I don't know if this necessarily answers your question, but I'll get that answer for you as far as the direct.
No, I mean, even the round number, when you said the sixties, it's fine.
It is in the sixties, you're correct, yeah.
No, I I was just wondering based on looking at other budgets and so I appreciate it.
That will give a pretty clear depiction of, so it's not just the salary that you pay for, but it's the fringes and the comp and everything that goes into it. And I think that was even mentioned when the the conversation was geared towards looking for different police agencies or whatever. When you look into those costs that go into, you know, a deputy in a station, the fleet and the workman's comp, fringes that are part of it. Again, this will break down, but it's only a portion of it. It's not the true, the true cost of what a deputy
Okay. Can you get that, you just give it to Justin and share it with us? That's appropriate.
Absolutely.
Any further questions for Colonel Flores? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Okay, I think we are down to city manager's board, Justin.
Yeah, so we have a lot of verbal things for you. Our next meeting is planned for Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. Because the twenty-sixth is a holiday for staff. We did receive notice that Pam was going to be leaving us. So we are going to be recruiting for a city council and planning commission, according to their period, I think going on last email update. Hopefully, we're able to fill that position sooner rather than later. But I want to thank Pam for setting what she did and worked since she's out the last year following Carol's retirement.
Okay. I should say, I I really liked how you did the minutes personally. I appreciate the time, love and deal.
Touch the end of the file.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a lot of time.
Does, do you have any questions for?
Wow, this is such a question, and I hope this is an appropriate time to bring this up. It's about the December twenty-seventh meeting. It's just like I had, I had a thought for something that we could do with the meeting. Is this an appropriate time to bring that up?
Sure.
So I know we had, some of us had talked about honoring the football team at some point. And I know that not everybody would necessarily be around December twenty-seventh. But I was wondering about the idea of like having a proclamation for them and inviting them to come to the meeting. I mean, obviously, some of them wouldn't be able to be here, but some of them would. And since it's a lighter meeting, it might be a nice way to end the year. It's just a thought. I don't know what others think about it, but I want to put it out there.
I'm good with it. Would you like to approach the coach?
Sure. I mean, I don't know him. If anyone else does, but I will, I will, if you would like me to.
Is your idea, it's not I give you?
I will, I will do that.
Dexter graduate and.
Thank you. I will do that.
Tell them they can't wear pads.
Okay.
Other questions for Justin? How's the progress on the building?
Still coming. There, they do that, they have gotten the basically pre-approval the elevator company. So now they're, they have set a date for the elevator, the elevator company to come in and actually do the installation. And we're looking at Monday or Tuesday of next week, I believe, the making of the twentieth to start the installation. With the holidays in there, it probably won't be complete till after first of the year, if I had to guess. But I think we're looking at the end of January, beginning of, between the end of January and middle of February to actually get everything finalized and hopefully make a move.
Will you be laying out a plan, written plan for that or? Are we closing the office? Will you?
Yeah, so so my thought is we would close the office for a week to 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 make the transition. Because there's, there's going to be quite a bit involved between starting services for phone, getting getting the servers and everything over here, getting everything physically moved.
Is that during an important tax deduction period?
So depending on the timing. Yeah, so the the deadline for taxes is February fifteenth, so I I wouldn't want to make a move that week. But if, you know, if it's that first week of February, last week of January. But I mean, it's all, it's it's still going to depend on when they get everything finalized and get get the final strip of occupancy from from the county. To get us in here as soon as possible.
Yeah, great. Murray, that's our end of the wall. Okay, hi Murray.
Hi, just to speak to the taxing, the tax collection, that is an important time for tax collection. I've already spoke with the bank. And with our, the woman that brings our mail. To make sure that the mail is directed to the right place. And if anything goes to eighty-one twenty-three, the bank is going to hold it for us. So we are also not going to put in any kind of forwarding notice. Until after March first, after the end of tax collection. That way, there'll be no risk of things. Like going back to Pontiac and lingering there for a week or two. The post office locally said that they would pull everything and send it off to thirty-five fifteen. And then we'll also have the Dropbox can still stay in front of eighty-one twenty-three. And we'll put, you know, obviously appropriate signage up there, things in the email update and that sort of thing. So I'm comfortable that we've done the best that we can. To make sure that the taxes can still be paid on time, in person, or by mail.
Good. I was just sort of thinking about the time of year. Thanks, Murray. Anything else for Justin? Okay, I will try to deliver a quick report. I will be getting out some draft dates for the role-setting meetings to everyone. Usually I do that at the end of December or first meeting in January, so get those on the schedule. Planning to do them Saturday mornings. We have in the past, that's typically worked pretty well for most. I did meet this afternoon along with Justin and Michelle with David Lutton and Tom Culver regarding the Sloan Kingsley property. Mr. Lutton continues to. Want to create a development there that. Is diverse in housing and provides a way to add residents to the city and who wants to come into the city for sewer and water. They are continually updating their. The plan for how the property would be used. Let me divide that up a little bit. They've applied, as I understand it, to the SIO Township. Land Preservation Board. To preserve and put a bunch of that in a conservation easement that would actually divide the property. In a north-south fashion. Such that a roadway would not be able to go all the way through it. From Baker to Dexter Crossing. So as they're thinking about their new phasing for that property, they. They tend to have a bubble, if you will, of development that would connect to the two roadways that are off the south side of Dexter Crossing. But it would be a limited number of homes in a horseshoe pattern, so that there's no connectivity road through. There would be walking trails that are set up. Across the entire thing. And some of those could technically, I think they said double as emergency routes if somebody needed to get. An emergency vehicle in one place. The big push is that he wants to start the process of working through a four twenty-five agreement. And he wants the city to take the lead, i.e. me. Take the lead on that. And, you know, when I asked you guys last meeting, how soon you wanted to get into the rolls discussion. This is one of the topics that I'd like to spend some time on and figure out whether this is a kind of priority or not. You know, we have a lot of things in front of us. Even mainly the fire station, which needs our first detention, first foremost detention. We've got the zoning ordinance. The budget workshops, we'll have a city manager review. Coming up in the first half of the year. You know, there's things like the annexation for Herman Farms that are out there. There's the. Suburban plan for Second Street. I don't know how involved we are in that or what that means. But there's a lot of things out there that potentially need. Our discussion time. I don't know where this fits on anybody's. Individually. Prior to this. I have not been shy about saying in public, and I said it to Mr. Lutton again today, that I'm. You know. Very focused on redeveloping some of the areas within town that we've identified in the master development. I think that's a huge opportunity. There's some other projects on Grand Street, the Millennium Place that I'd love to see. Take place. I think that those residents in that part of town and the core of our town makes a lot of sense from a. A logical place for density and a logical place to have taxable value in two or three stories instead of single family. So I'm going to need your guidance on this because I'm not going to be running in. Trying to carry this thing one way or the other. There's no doubt that, you know, with increased development would come increased tax revenue. Tax base residents. Also the need for services. The need for refit of. Tax collection, all that stuff gets multiplied by a factor and. You know, that site is a large site. It's about two hundred and forty-eight. And has the potential even with the conservation areas to add. I would say a thousand people or fifteen hundred people, depending on what number you believe is per house and per unit and how they do the math with the units. But. He's, you know, he has owned the property now for two years. Over two years, I think he told us. And, you know, he can't afford to let it sit without some decision. If we are not interested in that, he can go back to SIO and do a bunch of low-density. Plan. Probably in a similar. Ways to what I'm describing. So I guess I need your help, you know, we make decisions as a board. And. It was a positive. He did most of the talking for the first twenty-five minutes and then we asked a few questions and the big ask. This comes right out of what he read to us, okay? I'm only going to read you one sentence here. It says, so we are here requesting that you, Dexter. Become advocates for a four twenty-five agreement. And the work to accomplish one begin now. We want to partner with the chairman. This is a viable pathway. He had prepared a statement. I thought that. That fully expressed what he wants of all of us, really. Okay, because one of us cannot do this. I have not been able to get in touch with Will Hathaway yet in SIO Township to talk to him about anything. I fully intend to do that, so he knows that we have the meeting and that I've talked about it here. But, you know, back when I, when I was just September ninety days ago, when I talked with Will and David Lutton. And I did not have any confidence that his board was interested in pursuing this. So, you know, it takes a couple of tangos. Anyway.
So was there a, was there a revised, like, plan or proposed that he showed you?
Yeah.
With this, I mean, I'd be happy to see that.
I said I don't want to keep it.
Oh, he was just a paper copy.
It was a paper copy. Yep, leave everything back. The last thing I want is for. Some new graphic that's a concept, A B eight hundred and eighteen A.
Yeah.
To be out in the paper and have people thinking that we're doing something when we haven't talked about doing something. So. It was a visual and he passed it out and.
Yeah.
Off the wind. I'm describing it. I can tell you what colors he used. I mean.
And it was all, was it all single family or no?
No, it was a mixture of. Single-family south of Dexter Crossing. On the east side. It was. Condos and stacked flats and multifamily spread out on the side, lower sides towards Baker.
But it was really in the loop.
They were all loops. There was one entrance off of Baker with a loop for the multifamily, a loop for the condominiums, and a loop for the. Stacked flats. And then off of Dexter Crossing, it was a loop that went like this between the two of single family, you know.
So the only connecting to Dexter Crossing is single family, a loop of single family.
That was the proposed layout that they had talked about. That seemed to be logical today.
Yeah.
And a lot of walkways, you know, they're trying to protect the area, pardon me. There's a power line that bisects back there that they would try to make part of the walking trail. They use that space to double. And they've got a lot of things that they want to do, a lot of ideas. SIO Township has a very progressive. Walking trail for a plan that they would try to be connecting to. And then they, in the four twenty-five, they had a proposal for, you know, sharing some of the revenue, sharing some of the tax revenue for a period of time. And then they ultimately flowing. To the city. Those agreements are financial in nature at some point of them, so. Just terms, but.
Isn't, I mean. It's not something I think about a lot, so I wouldn't say if I. If it's for them, I'd have to look at information.
Well, I want to make sure that I'm conveying things to all of you because I think, and I think it's worth. Twenty minutes to half an hour conversation when we have our full board of one of the role-setting meetings coming on. To just know what's there, be aware of what's there. Maybe you can take a few weeks to think about some questions. Or if you haven't had a time, send them to me and I'll try to keep track of them while we're going back up. Don't want to lose the question. In the meantime, I'm going to reach out to SIO and just let Will. Supervisor Hathaway know that. You know, the conversation was. Broke. They, in order to do anything significant, they need our cooperation, but we only have so much capacity in our plant. We'd have to re-engage figuring out, you know. What that impact is, what that cost would then be, similar to what we're talking about, you know, on a small scale, corner farms. Anyway, so it's a lot of the same, but I wanted to know that was what he said. I did leave one meeting unintentionally off of my upcoming meetings. This Friday, in the afternoon, we have a. Our E D C. Economic Development Corporation. That meets once a year. It's going to be, and all we're going to do is approve the meeting minutes from last year and elect officers.
You have another watch.
Oh, God. What? No, I didn't see the agenda. You do?
You have windows of Tom Culver's contact you. Because. The LIBOR, which is what is the bonds that the E D C did for the.
Can issue, yeah.
Project.
Yeah.
So LIBOR is going away in June of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
There's going to happen a new.
Insurance.
Mechanism, not new issues, but a different basis for figuring out the interest rate will be. So Tom is providing information so that the E D C can approve a resolution so that when that. Entity or method is chosen, it can just automatically happen.
Okay. Okay. I am lacking one. There's a vacancy on that board. Again, it doesn't meet very often, but if anybody knows of anybody that's interested in that, I believe I have one open there. I mean, one open bill there. We do have two applications for horticulture heritage, so I will be reading those two folks. Over the next couple of weeks, during holidays, try to get that back in front on December's meeting, so we can have them present for the beginning of the meeting. Picture reminded me of the second period question. So we have one on parks and one on. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for me? The audience meetings, the negotiation meetings are all in my calendar. Both our union that we're negotiating with as well as the fire board union among all of those subcommittees this month. On Thursday, we will have a fire chief contract in front of the fire board to permanently hire Doug Armstrong. That passes, we'll have an official full-time fire chief. Start of the year, I think it would be very significant. Any questions for me? Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda has a total of ten items on it. Who would like to totally read those ten items for us, please?
I will move to approve the consent, the ten items on the consent agenda.
Was that in the back?
Oh, I'm supposed to read them all right now.
I think we're okay. I, we're all here.
Yeah, I was going to read a truncated version, but there's.
That's fine. Yep.
I mean, Cheryl, would you like me to read through them all?
Well, it all took to Cheryl. There's a consideration of the use of the bicentennial logo.
Oh, right.
As the recommended budget to bicentennial activities for Mount Apptice fifty-two ninety. And we were blessing the dates of June twenty for twenty-three. Right back actually. Is there a second? Okay, this panel is going to vote to approve the consent agenda.
Other than yes, Griffin, yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Excellent. Motion carries. Unfinished business. And L one, consideration of the amendment to city council rules. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the city council rules. From page one thirty-eight to page one forty-six in the. One thirty-eight to. One forty-six. Is there a second? One second? Okay, so that motion fails.
I move to postpone consideration of the amendment to the city council rule until. Tuesday, December twenty-seventh.
You have a reason for?
Just a stat job being here and with them having contributed, except for comment.
Okay, we're going to have a full council, yeah, where I was going. So motion to postpone, is there a second to postpone?
All second.
I think especially on the first moment.
Mike, sorry. The only thing I, I mean, can we postpone it further than that? I think we can sixty-four.
We've already adopted rules. We just did that last week.
What, the different team or we redact now?
Well, we called everyone. We adapted. We fulfilled the sixty-day requirement as far as I'm concerned.
I find going to January nine. And actually, I'm recollecting. I just had a free conversation with that when he said he wasn't able to attend it. I think his preference might be even worse than that. Not rule, but maybe. I. I just don't want to have it at the meet anymore, where it's not, you know, where we typically don't. Open large cans of worms, right? Especially because like. Oh, you're saying at the twenty-nine? Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm fine with it being one of mine. I can. Well, so there's a lot on the table on the second. I don't know what's happening.
There's a motion by you, second by one, if you're making it to January ninth, I'm accepting that as a present merit. That's the day you want to postpone. Continue the session on postpone. Like I said, I'm content with the action we took at the end, that we continued the rules. That to me is adapting and moving them on. So. If we never come back to another rule change, I'm happy about many other things, okay?
Right.
But. Yeah.
To get a motion on the. On the rules in place with the intent of postponing it to a subsequent. Meeting in January. If we're going to review amending the existing rules, I'm okay with postponing to a particular council session. If we're going to rewrite the rules, start over from scratch, start with a clean sheet. It needs to be a session that we need to plan for three or four hours because we're going to be starting from square one. And everybody should be involved in having that discussion. So. Amendment is one thing, starting over from scratch is something completely different.
I will tell you, I have no desire to start over from scratch. I don't have a problem if we tweak a few based upon. The majority settlement of council. There's a couple you want to tweak. You know, there's rules in there for altering the rules. But as far as I'm concerned, we've approved them. Pending further discussion on the night.
To be clear, I don't really want to start over from scratch either. I just want to hold the fee here when we approve them. To be clear, I don't really want to start over from scratch either. I just want to hold the fee here when we approve them. I mean, when we.
I get it. You know, obviously, there was no thought that two councilors weren't going to be here tonight and those put there. I mean, we had an idea that's not my devil problem. It's that the comments came up quicker, so. Okay, so that motion by Jamie, second by law, to postpone?
To January ninth.
To, to January ninth? All good? You got that, I think? Please call the votes, postpone?
Schla?
Yeah.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin?
Yeah.
Q.
Yes. Uh, new business, item M one, consideration of recommendations from Arts, Culture, Heritage Committee to commission David Zinn Errol for Mount Axet's seat thousand.
I'm going to approve the recommendation, um, to commission David Zinn Errol. I think it's EVO for Mount Axet's seat thousand. I will second.
Any discussions?
I have a question about the actual location, um, because it seems to imply that it's good EVO. I don't know if that means, I don't know what that means, I guess, because in the illustrations I see, it's like on the sidewalk pieces, so.
So, so Davidson is a pretty interesting artist in, in where he can place things. Uh, you know, his, um, his modus operandi is to incorporate his, uh, images in with the surrounding field, whatever they might be, um, to create a three D image. I, 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 I've seen images where, you know, they'll put it down in a brick, uh, building with like the creature like looking out. So, you know, I, I imagine you can probably do it anywhere where it is sheltered or, or, you know, going to last. But, uh, the, the recommendation from the Arts, Culture Heritage Committee was, uh, to place it on, on the monument or busybo.
Like the floor of it? Like the plank building floor?
I, 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 I don't know, but I, I, I wouldn't be privy to the, to the discussion at the meeting.
I think this is to be on either a, along the pillars or up into maybe a little bit higher, just so it's out of, I guess, the reach for people to tamper with it and just so it's more. Cheryl, you can provide more, well, do the, the management.
So David Zen is very organic, so he'll have to go to the site and look at everything and see what attracts his attention that can be turned into one of his designs. So most likely will not be on the floor because then people will walk on it and it clearly not last. But anywhere from floor level up is open, most likely, um, inside, so it's not exposed to the harsh elements directly.
How long could he intended to last? I guess I was figuring if he was doing it, it was like a permanent installation and it's meant to be a permanent installation. And what's the material that he used? What they, it's not chalked up?
No, right. It's not chalked. It's, um, there's a variety of materials, depending where he does it. They were kind of like hard on it to, you know, credits to, they're all coded. So that they don't.
Okay, obviously, I guess I don't think I'm inclined to have something, but I'm. But I, so I was picturing in and around maybe like, and I mean, with ones with bricks and others are kind of like in memoriam or like special thing. Anyway, I don't think I want something. But I think, yeah, maybe it's not. That's what I was going to say too, like, you know, I seconded the motion, but I wanted to clarify that that's not, I wouldn't that's not where I would like to see it put. I think the farmer's market as the backup location from ACH, I, I would be more comfortable with that. I also have to be honest, and I don't know if this is me being too, having too much of a personal preference, but I'm not so wild about the alien. Um, so if we aren't able to, if he does work organically like that, we aren't able to sort of say beforehand or see beforehand what he's going to do. I would, I would be inclined to not have an alien as one of the options.
You know, I always let you guys go first. Yeah, I absolutely don't want a gazebo. I think that's a poor choice. I guess I'd be maybe okay with the farmer's market. I, you know, I, I don't know if I envisioning something that's up out of the elements. You know, is it like a, you know, raccoon eating something up in the rafters that's painted on the underside of the farmer's market? You know, I don't know where it is protected, if it's something that we're not walking on. A lot of the examples you see are on sidewalks, but you know, I guess the question I have is, is, is there a way that is there a cost to bring him out to look at an area?
No. The six hundred and one thousand dollars includes everything that is involved in making these pieces are.
Gotcha. Well, then, I, I'm going to vote on the gazebo location. Schla?
I was going to say, can we amend the motion to remove, I mean, how do I do this? To remove the location? And I mean, how do we, how do, what I would be comfortable with, let me, let me put it this way, is not that location. Um, I would be fine with the farmer's market. I would be fine with the bridge. Um, I mean, there's a lot of locations I would be okay with. The gazebo is just not one of them. So how do we approve something to get him out here or look at things to come back to us with an option or a couple of options to then decide at that point what to do? Is that a possibility? How do we do that?
So, so another option could be to postpone and give staff direction to engage with Mr. Zen to look at alternative locations prior to becoming back as a, as an alien.
Okay.
Or we just change the motion to the farmer's market since the ACH committee said that was another preferred location.
Yeah, but, but I need to space out real quick. I think that's a, their reason I have added those additional locations as well. So I don't think there's any also perhaps could be as a thing at historic structure in the city, and that's kind of why I include those in there as well as other options that council.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I also wanted to just add, um, from the Arts, Culture Heritage meeting, we had originally suggested the library, um, and it was brought back to our attention that it was heard to be a city location for this first piece of art. And so that's why we're extremely limited because there aren't a lot of city properties. So we are limited to the gazebo or the bridge or these offices or, um, I think, uh, the barbecue place. And then the farmer's market, so.
Schla?
Can we clarify what we mean by the bridge?
It's the main street bridge.
Underneath?
Underneath the main street bridge and we, that's where, oh, Arts, Culture Heritage kind of decided that that may not be the best place just because
And it's not.
Earlier concerns of it looking like graffiti.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's not ours for one. And two, and two, it's, two, it looks like graffiti.
I want to clarify as well, is the, as I think it was, um, Zach in a previous meeting mentioned the paneling, is the paneling on the, on the upper, is that? I believe it was.
It's still, it's still not ours. We'd actually have permission to do it. But to, to me, the easy, I mean, if you want to move this forward, the easy choice is to recommend a farmer's market and have him come out and provide his opinion of what he can do at the farmer's market. I assume that we'd get to approve it once he does that?
We, we could do that way.
I mean, that would be, if you, if you want to move this forward tonight, that's what I would recommend.
I'm fine with that. Randy's fine with that. Yeah, I don't know what progress we're technically supposed to. I mean, happy to do.
You can withdraw the motion. We can change the mode, get a motion to change the motion. And there's multiple ways to do this. It's the same spot. And technically, we should make a motion to change the motion to approve the thousand dollars for.
I'm going to make a motion to, yeah, to amend the previous motion, um, to approve the thousand dollars at the farmer's market instead of.
For the chipmunk raccoon and black squirrel.
For the creature TBD, no, yeah, no friendly alien.
I'm just trying to get her vote.
And, uh, pending, pending approval of city council.
So, so, so you, 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 you do want to see it, you want it to come back with, with the creature?
Here's why for both of them.
Okay.
Yeah. The motion to amend the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Did you get the motion done? As best way? Thank you. Hey, discussion on the motion to amend. I know Joe's probably loves that following out of Joe's teeth. I tried to make a layer here. Okay, so, uh, a yes vote on this motion to amend, amends the original motion to be a motion to have Davidson come out to look at the farmer's market for a possible chipmunk raccoon and black squirrel creatures. And then we'll vote on the original motion. So this is, this is motion to amend. Please call the vote to.
Schla?
Yeah.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin? Q.
Yes. Okay, the motion to amend passes. Is there, now we have the, the new, the new motion is now to have Davidson come out and evaluate the farmer's market area for a potential mural with the three creatures at the front of that. Sounds not become the. Any further discussion on that?
Sorry, alien.
Please, please call the vote to approve that motion.
Hubbard, yes. Schla?
Yeah.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Griffin? Yes. Q.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. At least we got him coming to the community, Cheryl. There you got him coming, okay?
I'll take everyone's.
I hear you. I understand. Joe?
We approve the Washington County Sheriff's Office contract review for September first.
By Semafaro or by second? Thank you. Any discussion on the sheriff? Great, same on. Please call the vote if you're ready.
Griffin? Yes. Semafaro?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Q.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. New business item M three, consideration of resolution to amend organizational matters. So I, just before anybody makes a motion, I'll make something real. My preference is to keep Zach on the fireboard. Who's going to put the motion there?
I'm going to approve a resolution for the purpose of establishing organizational matters for the city of Dexter, being MP twenty-four of the packet noting that had page one eighty-five, Zach Michelson listed and John Q for Dexter area fire department board. The other edit I wanted to make was just that, uh, the chart on one eighty-seven on the right hand side, the representatives listed there also need to be updated, yeah, indicated.
So, so that, that, that isn't, that isn't part of
That would be part of.
The resolution. That, that, that was more for everyone's reference so that we all knew when it's.
All right, you're losing that for that, so.
Yeah.
So from one eighty-four to one eighty-six.
One eighty-four, one eighty-six, yep. I'll second that one.
Okay, motion by Amy Seck. Thank you both. Any discussion? I mean, I like the session, but, okay. Please call the vote.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin? Yes. Schla?
Yeah.
Q.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for volunteering to be on various boards and for being that setup. Remember again, if we have to change something or something to interrupt your schedule, we can always amend that. Please be nice to that going forward. Um, yeah, now you can't interrupt, there's a Christmas dinner tomorrow night, do you have to play?
Really?
So just, there, there is, but I'll, I'll tell him he'll send the first meeting there.
I think it's a get to.
Get to. Oh, yeah, how did I say, have to? Yeah, well, like, you're right, get to it then. Great, thank you. Council comments. Um, I'm going to let our debate champion go first this evening.
On the topic of the art project, uh, that we're doing, I know that our school has, um, just that I appreciate the art, especially in that kind of manner, because their school does a similar thing where every person who takes a higher level art class creates more mural in our school. And I mean, when we post tournaments or have people come from outside of our school, they make comments and things like that. Because having cool art, especially one that fits into like our city, I think is really cool and people notice that when they come to visit and especially when they live here. And I think it can also make things that maybe don't look so nice, look really cool. Just that I appreciate that motion, I think it's really cool.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah.
No comment. Schla?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I want to say I appreciate all of our discussion, our open discussion, um, during the sheriff's report, and I really appreciated Commander Forrest being here and talking to us and you know, letting us know if he's available, um, to us. I wanted to just say that I, I have talked to the executive director at Avrana, as I said before, and she let me know that all the residents there are thriving and they are happy and grateful and excited to be living here and be a part of the community. And I want to follow that up with the incidents that have been brought up in the report were all really initiated or related to non-residents of that complex. So when we talk about the perceived threat to the community, I want to make sure that we remember that the, the direct threat is to that group of citizens living in that complex. And so I do appreciate, you know, what the sheriff is doing there to try to keep them safe. And I hope that, you know, we can try to figure out something that really continues to keep them safe, try to figure out how to keep people who don't live there from creating problems in what would otherwise be a peaceful area in town.
Okay, thank you, Bella.
Yeah. I'm planning to say this anyway, so I'm not just saying your comment. Um, but again, on that topic, I just, I wanted to say earlier that many things can be true at once, that we can be happy that there are people who are new to our community, who are thriving. We can also be concerned about patterns of behavior that we haven't seen before here in Dexter. And since you mentioned it, I do just want to clarify that the alleged perpetrator in the break-ins and any decent exposure, the same person had recently moved in to help that view of our night.
Okay, anything else? I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Um, have a great holiday. Get your families. Be safe. Enjoy Dexter. Ready travels if you have to travel. Um, we are back around to not arrange. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? Okay. Yeah, we are adjourned at, what time do you want it to be? Eight fifty-three. That's like three hours and thirty-six minutes ahead of.
Make a motion though?
Yeah, I did a motion to.
I move, we adjourn at eight fifty-three.
Second by. Dan, all the members, if you have time to say hi, please.
Hi.